It just kind of buzzes or shakes.
Well, good morning, everyone. I will now call to order the April 10th, 2025 Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, would you please do the roll call for us?
Yes, Chair, thank you. First, our staff support today. County Council, Jane Vedo; Clerk to the Board, Andrew Giraki. Roll call, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
President.
Chair Roberts.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'd ask everyone to please stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. To start off, County Administrator Gary Schmidt, you have a announcement?
Yes, quick general update for you Commissioners. That is breaking news I wanted to inform you about today, and that is, we just received notice yesterday, staff did, from the Oregon Judicial Department, that they are proposing a change to the master funding agreement between Clackamas County and the state regarding the replacement county courthouse. As you know, the courthouse is about to open here in three weeks, and we are relying on the state's match portion of this funding to pay the milestone payment that is due to the contractor on May 1st. The state is proposing changing what the state dollars are allowed to be spent on, projects that we actually were anticipating the state would pay for. So this is a dramatic impact, if this indeed comes to pass, on how we are going to fund the replacement courthouse. Now, I'm not here to alarm you, I want to inform you, staff are working together collaboratively with the state last night and today, and we hope we can resolve this. But if not, I will let you know tomorrow or this weekend, and may need your intervention with other elected officials to address this. But again, not to alarm you, but to be concerned that this is concerning what the state is proposing here at the 11th hour, after we've had an agreement for three years, and it appears an attempt to change that agreement by the state. Again, don't be alarmed yet, we're going to work on this with the staff to staff, but I'll keep you informed if this changes. I wanted you to know that, Commissioners.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Comment, Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, one quick question, Gary, and then a comment. Just to ballpark, if we did lose that part of the agreement funding, the impacts could range from what to what?
I don't have exact numbers, and I don't want to, again, alarm you, but it could be between, it would impact our $130 million payment to the state significantly.
Okay, well, I just, I think most people know this, that watch us and listen to us in our Budget Committee, but we can't even afford a $100,000 annual expense at this point. That's how tight the budget is. So that is alarming, and so keep us posted, please.
Will do, yes.
All right. Well, again, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the public communications portion of our board meeting. Testimony today is limited to three minutes. I ask that comments be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can also email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as a part of our public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I'll take in-person testimony first, and we have an amazing clerk, and would you please moderate the in-person and virtual testimony for us?
Thank you, Chair. If you are joining us today in person and would like to speak, I ask you to please fill out a blue card that can be found by the main entrance and deposit it in the box by the door. Once again, if you'd like to speak in person today, please remember to fill out a blue card. They will be called upon in the order that they are received. I will call two names at a time, both should come forward, and each will have three minutes. First, Paul Edgar. Paul Edgar, and after will be Isaac Ambrosso. Paul Edgar and Isaac Ambrosso, come forward, please introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Is it live?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Edgar.
Thank you. Good morning, Commission. Paul Edgar, Oregon City. I brought up to you a little email that I sent out on the need of interacting with the local mayor of Oregon City and the commission about housing, homeless housing, shelter housing, and transitional housing. What could, what do we need? And I know Commissioner West is highly involved in all of this stuff, but when we're going to have a caring center being built at Miles Plastic, Old Miles Plastic on North Main Street, and it's going to be Father's Heart is scheduled to move in, as well as a lot of other services, but this facility will be an attraction, and it potentially can be bringing people in from outside of Multnomah County, all over into the center, and many of them that are going to be coming in can have a degree of dysfunction. They're looking for help, they're looking for services, and many of them can be the house unhoused and the homeless. And when they come in, we can't, they can be interacted with, but when Father's Heart and the shelter closes in the evening, we could have then more people being attracted into Oregon City than we previously have had without any shelter housing, any transitional housing. And in discussions, because I've been hoping to get the mayor in Oregon City kind of in sync, all of a sudden it comes up that the mayor says, "Well, I would love to have conversations. I would love to be meeting with appropriate people where we can be discussing this and understanding how to do it." I can't, I'm not really speaking for her, but I heard her talk about hoping that this line of communications could be created where they can get a handle on what they can do, what the city can do, and it's for somebody like myself that sits on trying to pay back. I've been lucky in life, and I want to contribute to finding solutions that help a better city, help our people in need, and do what we need to do to turn lives around. And we need places where, let's say, a homeless person or unhoused person has a point to where we can do triage, where they can clean up their act, have their head opened up, and where we can communicate with them. And that doesn't happen when we put them back out in the street immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Mr. Ambrosso, go ahead, please.
Okay. Let me see, testing. Hi, thank you Chair Roberts and the rest of the commission for having me here today. My name is Isaac Ambrosso, I'm the new Deputy Director of Public Policy for the Home Building Association of Greater Portland. So I'm here to talk to you about the proposed permit fee increase, moving from $85 to $120. You know, I've been going back and forth with staff at the county on this issue for the past week or so. They've gotten really in-depth. The county has been a fantastic partner as we've been evaluating this, so I do want to call out specifically Mike Rosell for doing a bunch of work on this with me. But, you know, this fee, I think from HBA's perspective, it's fairly well-constructed. Pegging it to CPI isn't a particular problem for us, we like that kind of consistency. I understand that the fee structure hasn't been updated in 15 years, so I can imagine that that's causing some financial difficulties. And so I think that from the perspective of this one fee increase, then we wouldn't have a lot to push back on. But unfortunately, in my position as representing the home builders and the people that are working and doing construction in this county, it's difficult for me to put it into the context of one increase. We had a significant number of DTD increases during the last year that kicked in at the beginning of this year. We're going to, I'm going to be before you all again next week to talk about Wes's proposal for some SDC increases. And I think it's important to note, in the context of this conversation, that, you know, none of this stuff happens in a vacuum. All of it adds up, and even relatively minor stuff like this, which looks like, okay, we're just keeping pace with regional standards, you know, a lot of that, not all of it and not every time, but a lot of it does get passed on to consumers, and those increases over time add up. We're cognizant of the fact that the county, the permitting office, and DTD, none of that runs without revenue, it doesn't run without staff, and so we do want to make sure that you can meet staffing targets, that there's no slowdown in service. All of that is important to industry, and probably more important than this specific increase. But, you know, I just want to be aware that, you know, I've only been in this job a little over a month, and this is the third fee conversation that I've had between me and my predecessor in the past couple of months. So there's, you know, there's significant, and that pressure isn't unique to Clackamas County, but there is a significant worry among my members that even when good ideas and ideas that are necessary in a vacuum are passed or considered, that they're not considering the larger context. And so really, I think I'm here to urge you, as we're having some of these larger conversations and as you're considering this increase, to really consider that larger context, and whether there are, you know, sources of revenue that can be reallocated or moved. I understand that the DTD fee increases that happened before my time can't be reallocated to this, despite the fact that they're raising revenues. So I think that, you know, to sum up, I think that it's very important that we start to consider how we can be a little bit more flexible about this, so we don't have to do increases every time and can instead reallocate money to where it needs to go.
Thank you, Isaac, and thank you, Paul. Thank you very much. And Gary?
Just, Mr. Ambrosso, you are testifying about the building code and plumbing fee schedule changes, is that correct? So apologies, that public hearing actually is coming up. Commissioners, if you'll allow him to use that testimony, you don't have to come back again, but we didn't announce that.
I apologize.
No, you're fine, we didn't announce that correctly. So he's commenting on your public hearing coming up next, building code and plumbing fee schedule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a white.
I can wait, but I want to go.
Next, for general public comment, Chris Waller and Giovanni Shirin. Next, for general public comment only, Chris Waller and Giovanni Shirin. Please come forward and introduce yourselves, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. As always, when I speak before the board, I'm speaking as a private citizen. In filling seat four, I trust that the Commissioners will choose a candidate that will create harmony, not divisiveness, on this board. You have very important work ahead of you, and you need a true team player. In the November election, the voters of Clackamas County were clear on what they did and did not want to see in their elected officials. We rejected the candidates with histories of actions that promoted divisiveness, distrust in science, election denialism, and xenophobia, and overwhelmingly chose the candidates who represented trust in the democratic process and the value of all people in our diverse county. I ask you all to consider the overt wishes of your constituents as you choose the next Commissioner. Of the candidates that have applied, I know that you are lucky to have several who epitomize the values of cooperation, experience, compassion, and dedication that will help this board move forward away from the turmoil of the past. I trust your choice will be someone who will unite us, not divide us, someone who will help restore trust in the board rather than tear it down, and someone who will represent all of the values that the people of our county voted for. Thank you.
Shirin, go ahead, please.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Giovanni Shirin, and I'm here on behalf of my organization up and over. You may remember me, because this is the second time that I've come to speak before this board, because our work, our people, and the folks that we serve have become collateral damage in conversations we're not even invited to. I'm here to speak to you today, not as a party to the labor dispute, but as someone caught in the middle of it, alongside my staff, and most importantly, the people we serve. Our organization works closely with the county. Clackamas County staff are the ones who process rent payments for our clients, manage utility assistance programs, and reimburse us for the work we do. We can't afford to wait out a strike. This leaves our organization and others like ours facing serious financial strain, which impacts our ability to serve. We have two invoices in right now that I'm not even sure will be paid in time to make a payroll in a month or two. So this, these conversations are far-reaching and beyond this panel and beyond just the county employees. But what's even more concerning to me is the effect this will have on our clients. Many of the people we serve have experienced long-term homelessness, trauma, and instability. They finally found some footing, but now, let's say if rent payments are to be delayed or missed, they will start receiving notices, scary pieces of paper that trigger fear, anxiety, and panic. And this kind of uncertainty is deeply harmful and can undo months or even years of progress in a matter of minutes. We're doing everything we can to support our clients, but we can't do it alone. And let me be clear, we are all in support of the Clackamas County employees. They are vital to our work, to our community, and the lives of every person who depends on the system that they keep running. Their labor matters, and so do the consequences when those systems pause or are stopped. Sometimes my faith gets a little shaky, then God reminds me, "Nope, let me show you this, and remember when I did that." So I stand here today in full faith, you will find a resolution with the Clackamas County employees, for my team, for our clients, and for the sake of those who can't be here to speak for themselves today, I ask you, as I asked last time, please figure this out. Because these conversations you have go beyond that podium and reach farther than the people in the rooms you are having conversations with. So I thank you for your time and your commitment to the residents of Clackamas County, which include county employees, me, my team, and the most vulnerable people that we all serve. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Spicer. And this is a final call. If you have not yet filled out a blue card and would like to speak, please fill out a blue card and deposit it in the box by the door. Mr. Spicer, go ahead, please.
Chair Roberts, Commissioners, citizens, thanks for being here today. I'm here just to formally introduce myself as an applicant for the open seat on the board. I have a long history in public service, I've been a past candidate, and I've taken time, as I've prepared myself to be a finalist, to talk to neighbors and hear about the issues affecting the county. I can appreciate that county governments across the state are facing huge deficits, as we've heard, and I've talked to folks in the community. Employees are, they're having trouble getting by, and they want fairness in terms of the union bargaining process. So I hope that with folks being here, having a packed room, and a lot of people concerned about the future of our government, and how that's going to affect our communities, that we can come up with reasonable solutions. I think it was addressed that we're in an unfortunate political climate here, and that's not unique to Clackamas County. So I think with your appointment process, I appreciate that it's been streamlined, open to public input. I've had a chance to gather some letters of support, and you have a big task ahead of you. There's been conflict on both sides. This is not a politically appointed position, it's nonpartisan, but I think we have to be realistic that with a county of this size, its geographic coverage, the wide variety of demographics that rely on our government programs and services, it's within the county's charter to oversee. It's, you know, it's going to be a process that some repair building needs to take place. So I appreciate everything you're doing, and yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing no more blue cards for those who wish to speak in person today, Chair, with your permission, I'll now move to online testimony. If you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to speak during the general public comment period, I'll now ask you to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Rini Locken, I'll unmute you, please introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes. Rini, I'm afraid we're unable to hear you. Are you able to hear us? Rini appears to be having technical difficulties. Rini, while you work on that, I'll now ask anyone else who wishes to speak to please raise your hand, and I will also call on you. Seeing no other hands, Rini Locken, I see that you wish to speak, you have been unmuted. This is your last opportunity, if you could please say something if you still wish to
Sorry, we're, there's technical difficulties, we're not able to hear.
Other than that, Chair, I see no one else who wishes to speak during public comment today in person or virtual.
All right. Excuse me, thank you, and I'll now close the public communication portion of this meeting. We'll move on, but I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to respond. I know Commissioner West had a comment.
Paul, thank you for testifying. I know we are both passionate about serving those in our community that are homeless or struggling with substance abuse disorder or behavioral issues. I'm going to, I can give this to you later, but we have a packet here that talks about a lot of the things you were concerned about, and that packet will address the recovery campus, that will be an asset that we're building, multi-acre campus to provide people care that they need from street-level homelessness all the way through the care continuum to where they're stabilized, including long-term care, detox care, peer support housing, workforce supports, all of this kind of state-of-the-art, trauma-informed, very inspirational thing that we're doing around recovery specifically, so you might have heard a lot about that. There's also part of the entire care continuum, the center being built that you spoke to, Paul, in Oregon City. But there's a lot of other things that we're doing to build out the assets necessary, the infrastructure necessary, to deliver the care that people morally deserve and should have. So I'll give this to you, it explains a lot of that. One page is missing in it because it's still in production, but almost done, but it gives you a pretty good overview about all the different aspects in which we're trying to provide those things to the people in our community. I think it's also why we're having fantastic outcomes comparatively, because this is a priority of this board to make sure those that are struggling with this no longer suffer or exist alone in our streets, and so we're very passionate about addressing that directly. We share that passion, and I want to make sure you're aware of all the things we're doing. Anybody who wants this packet, we have this available to you, that breaks out, breaks down a lot of the things that we're doing with that population, and it talks about the system and the worldview and the philosophy that we're operating in, also to help you guys be informed about how we're doing this and going about it. Chair, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, seeing no other, Gary, we'll move on then. What's next?
Next is a presentation proclaiming April 2025 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. We have Don Kingsborough representing the Granges of Clackamas County, who will make a brief presentation to you. Mr. Kingsborough, please come forward.
Good morning.
Must be something going right if you all can grin like that. All of you, all of you, look at that.
Every day's a holiday.
So Chair Roberts, Commissioners, staff, my name is Don Kingsborough. I am the Community Service Chairman for your Clackamas Pomona Grange. In our world, Pomona means an association of Granges, and in this case, there are 16 subordinate or community Granges in Clackamas County, and the Pomona is made up of all those Granges. In the Pomona Grange, thanks to Paul Savis, little trip to Lane County he made a few years ago, we have one community service project, and that is supporting the Veterans Village. And we do that very well. Recently, at Warner Grange, we had three musical events in cash, we only raised about $300, $350, but we killed, we filled my car three times with clothes and food and toiletries, and they were all delivered to the village. The month of April, which is Grange Month, all of the Granges in Clackamas County are collecting toiletries, personal hygiene, clothing, and that will be delivered to the village. I forgot to bring the plaque, but Do Good Multnomah selected your Pomona Grange, Clackamas Pomona Grange, as the most outstanding contributor to veterans in the four-county area. Clackamas, Multnomah, Washington, and Clark. So yeah, these, these folks behind me here, they're the ones that are responsible for that. It was a real honor to be supported and presented that plaque by Do Good, who does an awful lot of good in the four-county area. So I want to highlight to you a little bit about what your subordinate Granges do to support the communities in Clackamas County. And the first Granger reached out to me and sent me a list was Maplewood, and Maplewood Grange is represented behind me here. They are having a cookie exchange. Now, I've never heard of a cookie exchange before, but basically, you cook a couple dozen cookies at home, you go to the Grange Hall, and other people are there, and you exchange cookies and have conversation. It's a great way to get to know your neighbors, your friends, maybe a politician or two, who knows? I don't know. Can you guys cook? Yeah, I don't know. In addition to that, they have Zumba, and they have other events going on. Their Grange Hall, as well as almost all the Grange Halls in Clackamas County, are open to any group in the community that wants to do something for the community. So if you want to talk about a highway that should be changed, if you want to talk about street lighting, whatever, you can have a meeting in the Grange Hall, and it doesn't cost you anything. A youth group, Boy Scouts, homeschoolers, whatever youth group, use our Grange Halls at no charge. Abernathy Grange, you all, you all should remember Abernathy Grange, just a year ago, just a year ago, on Cinco de Mayo, you guys were there saying, "I want to be elected." Right? Chair Roberts?
Yep.
You had a good time at Abernathy Grange. So Abernathy Grange has been good enough to host our last two Candidates' Fairs, and we think they've been pretty successful. Brother Ben was there three years ago, and Paul, Paul comes all the time. Whether he's running or not, he's there. I think he comes for the food, the nachos at all. Beaver Creek Grange. Beaver Creek Grange supplies a meeting place for Beaver Creek Lions and for the Beaver Crack Hamlet. They get to meet there free, plus youth groups, there's a Boy Scout troop that meets at Beaver Creek Grange. Clark's Grange. Clark's Grange out in the country a little bit, what a wonderful Grange. They have, in their basement on their first floor, they have a whole host of medical equipment, which is free to people in the community, all the way from hospital beds to crutches, bandages, they have everything in their Grange Hall. In addition to that, they're into a lot of other community service, and they do a lot of catering. Y'all looking for a high school reunion and want it catered? Clark's Grange, they're the ones. Garfield Grange, little old Garfield Grange out east of Estacada.
Hey!
Hey! Quilts, quilts, that's a quilting Grange. They have, they have offered and given probably 50 quilts to the Veterans Village over the last half dozen years. So every veteran there, male or female, that wants a quilt has been able to get a quilt. That's wonderful, little old Garfield. Boring Damascus Grange. Boring Damascus Grange, in my mind, is kind of famous because two politicians kind of got their start there. When they have their strawberry feed in June, strawberry waffles, y'all been there and got those, haven't you, Martha? Yeah, they're good. Well, we have a current congressman and a current director of the Department of Labor who basically started their political careers at Boring Damascus in Candidates' Fairs. Okay? Put that in your little book of statistics. Sunnyside Grange, blood drives, community plays. Springwater Grange is dear to my heart because I'm a member there. Along with Beaver Creek Grange, Springwater Grange has a breakfast on the first Saturday of every month, except during the summer. In addition to that, and those are good breakfasts, I mean, you guys are hungry on the first Saturday, save it up and go. I mean, it's all-you-can-eat breakfast, a reasonable price. In addition to that, Springwater Grange has a pie auction, and this goofy guy over here, Brother Ken Humberston, who's a member- And this, this goofy guy over here, Brother Ken Humberson, who's a member of Beaver Creek Grange, he comes out and he's our auctioneer for this pie auction. And I've never seen a guy that can get somebody to bid against themselves. I'm serious. I'm serious. I watched him get the same person to bid her own bid up. And kids, little kids come out and Ken gets in front of them down on his knees and, and the parents shiver as they're squeezing on their wallets. You know, it's, it's really funny. In addition to that, Spring Water Grange does scholarships. And I gave you all a little flyer. We're doing a spaghetti dinner. Many of the Granges in Clackamas County do what's called Words for Thirds, which is a dictionary program where we give dictionaries to every third grader. At Spring Water Grange, I believe it's four elementary schools. Warner Grange, we give three elementary schools. Every year, we give every third grader their own dictionary. And in this year, in this time of computers and, and phones that do magic things, you think that's not a big deal, but go with me sometime and see the smiles on their faces. And then they get in that dictionary and they learn that they can learn Braille, or they can learn sign language, they can learn the longest word in the dictionary, which is 2,700 characters. It's, it's magic to see their little faces and answer their questions. Basically, your Granges are alive and well, and we are doing good things for your community. If there's any questions, if there's not any questions, I'm done. If there, I believe that Brother Andrew has a proclamation to read, and we would love a photo op if you would all take a break.
We're happy to do that. We have a, a lot of people up here who want to make some comments, though, and particularly, I know it's all the good work that all of you do. So I'll just start out by saying thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Martha here.
Hi, how much, nice to see you all here today. I love the Grange. You guys are fantastic. And I know Brother Ken pretty well. He's a good guy. In any case, aren't, don't you, isn't it Spring Water that works with Love One for food? There's one, I know, which one is that?
No, I'm sorry, I omitted that. It's Redland.
It's Redland Grange.
Redland Grange, your Veterans Village. Love One comes to Redland Grange. Somebody from my committee, Tracy or myself, or Courtney or somebody else, we meet them there, and they fill a car with food.
Yep.
And we take it to the village. And the fellows at the village are there waiting with smiles and they're helpful. And, and Martha, that, that has, has made me feel so good. When I can go there and sit with those veterans and talk with them, it's, it's a delight. The other thing I didn't mention is that Clark's Grange, once a month, every month, even through pandemic, they prepare food at their Grange Hall, take it to the village, and we sit down around a table along with ice cream donated by Steve Leets of Baskin Robbins in Gladstone. And we have dinner, Sunday dinner with the vets. And it's delightful. So we do that on the third Sunday. Y'all are welcome to come around a little after four, quarter after four or so. You're welcome to come, sit down with the vets, talk about betting on TV or whatever. So I'm, I'm sorry I interrupted you, Martha.
No, no, I just wanted to say I buy Steve's honey. He's a beekeeper too.
Well, that, that's Redland Grange and Love One, and what a, what a wonderful organization. Yes.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Martha. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all the work the Granges have done, especially, you mentioned the Veterans Village. That's probably the most significant emotional thing, I think, for me. Learning experience was the outpouring of all the contributors that helped with the Veterans Village during, before, during, and afterwards. And every time I take people out for tours or visit the Veterans Village, you know, you all come up because you're, you're regulars there. And so I just want to just say to all of you involved in the Grange and helping out our veterans and all the other needs in the community, you know, heartfelt thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Paul. That means a lot coming from you. You started it, so.
Well, it was a team effort. It was a team effort.
I realize that, but you and Martha were the
Thank you for that.
Not pinheads, the drive-hards.
Yeah.
Commissioner West? Thanks, Gary.
Thank you. You guys do amazing work in so many different capacities and so, and so multifaceted in your engagement to the community. I've always said the only way that we have good local government, if we have good local organizations like you partnering alongside of us to do this work. You know, when we deal with populations that struggle or community members that need somebody to know they care about them, government can only do so much, but you guys are representative of the community and of neighborhoods and of relationships and of strong neighborly ties and really caring for one another, which is a sign of a healthy community. Your history with the Veterans Village has been phenomenal, and, and we couldn't do it without you. We have three commissioners here today that were widely involved in that. Commissioner Savis and Martha were very strong proponents of getting the Veterans Village going. Commissioner Humberson, you're in the crowd today too. Thank you for your efforts as a commissioner. And thank you for your service, sir, and commissioner, and the armed forces is greatly appreciated.
He was a jarhead.
I still appreciate your service, Commissioner. It's an honor of my lifetime to serve in the United States Navy as an officer. Thank you. And so we, we now, because of your work at the Veterans Village and helping it be a success, we're duplicating that. We're scaling it up. We're moving onward to 2.0, and let's keep going. We have the Clackamas Village being built next door. I think the Veterans Village is about to be, get a little remodel and a revamp too, and to be improved upon. But it wasn't easy, and it was on shoestring's budgets, and it had to get creative. And you had PSU students to help you figure out how to build pods, and you had, how are we going to get the electricity over there? And all these fun stories you hear. But the end of the day, a lot of people aren't living on our streets and they're back and they're part of our communities again because of the work of people like the Grange, showing up to care for your neighbors. And it wasn't partisan, it was just about doing the work we have to do to take care of our neighbor. So thank you for doing that. You're greatly appreciated. And it's just, and, and I'm going to try to definitely make it to the, the next waffle feed. I want to go to the spaghetti dinner, but I have drills, so I can't make that one. But, but yeah, thank you very much.
Go Navy, beat Army.
Yeah.
Well, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First, I also want to recognize who's not here anymore is the former Director of Health Housing and Human Services, Rich Swift. And during the creation of Veterans Village, which he was kind of leading that charge, you know, one of the things that we worked pretty closely on how we can transition people that are in our jail, that are veterans, from the transition center to kind of give them really a leg up on really getting out of a homeless situation. And so it kind of really shows how we all need to come together, provide wraparound services, and kind of everybody stepping up to help. So for all of you helping support veterans means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to our veterans, so I want to say thank you. I wanted to make sure I've got all the Granges because for those that are watching, I think it's important to, number one, recognize all our Granges. And I might have you give me a phone number, but I've copied all these. So the Redland Grange, the Beaver Creek Grange, the Clark's Grange, the Maplewood Grange, the Garfield Grange, the Boring Damascus Grange, the Sunnyside Grange, and the Spring Water Grange. Did I miss any?
We have, we have Frog Pond Grange, which is struggling for membership. We have Milwaukee Grange, which is also struggling for membership. Milwaukee has, has opened their hall up to the community of the city of Milwaukee. They're, they're struggling a little bit. What have I got forgotten, fellas?
Abernathy.
Abernathy. No, Abernathy was first one, but you didn't have it on your list. Oh, the Sandy, the Sandy Grange, they have bingo twice a month, and they always make a contribution. In fact, I have to go out there in the next week or so and pick up a contribution for the village.
Fantastic. So I think for folks that, again, that are paying attention to this, their efforts to help support the Granges in turn help support our veterans. And that's all the way from clothing, quilts, toiletry, medication, or medical supplies, and
And coffee, non-decaffeinated regular coffee.
Everybody needs some coffee. I'll say cheers to that. So with that being said, looking to my colleagues, do I have a motion on this resolution?
You going to read it?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, I skipped over reading it. Do you want to go ahead and read the resolution for us? Sorry about that.
Of course, Chair. In the matter of proclaiming April 2025 to be Grange Month in Clackamas County, the text of the resolution is as follows. Whereas this matter coming before the board at this time, it appearing that the Grange's mission to strengthen individuals, families, and communities through grassroots action, service, education, advocacy, and agricultural awareness is complimentary to the board's goals to grow a vibrant economy and ensure safe, healthy, and secure communities. And whereas, for 156 years, the Grange has played an essential and lasting role in building rural and small-town America and ensuring its resiliency through advocacy and direct service. And whereas, the Grange today is growing because it is an active, rooted, resilient, and united organization in thousands of communities across the country. And whereas, the Grange continues its unique role in connecting rural America to urban America through agricultural appreciation education and by advocating for strong, common-sense, best-for-everyon public policy. And whereas, the Grange emphasizes civic responsibility and the involvement of citizens in the legislative process. And whereas, the Grange offers opportunities for civil discussions among people of all viewpoints and opinions, serving as a safe space for exploring important social and legislative issues of the day. And whereas, even through a worldwide pandemic, the Grange continues to promote service to the local community and volunteerism to improve the quality of life and economic well-being of its members and residents across America. And whereas, the Grange is proud to be Grange Strong, Rooted, Resilient, and United, and encourages Grange and community members everywhere to come together to celebrate hometown pride and sustainability. And whereas, Grange members everywhere desire and deserve to celebrate and express their pride in the legacy of such a highly respected organization. Now, therefore, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Now I'll turn to my colleagues. Any questions, comments? I think we've heard.
Well, I move we approve the proclamation of April 2025 as Grange Month in Clackamas County.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Schrader has moved to approve the proclamation of April 2025 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. Commissioner Savis has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call a poll?
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much, and we'll step down here and have a picture with everybody.
All right, everybody look over here. We got hide in the back a few. Commissioner Schrader, you're All right. Think we're good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thought you threw me out there, though.
It's great to see you guys here.
I have a question for you. I know. Then I will, then I will also I forgot what he said. Just wait till Friday. I want to say he was in insurance or something like that, I think. Then I will sue. No, I have nothing. Stop! I feel like that's a trap, Mr. Chair.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so moving on. Gary, what is up next?
Thank you, Chair. Next, you have two public hearings. The first public hearing is Proposed Community Development 2025 Action Plan. Presenting today is Mary Rumbaugh, Director of Health Housing and Human Services. And then you'll have the public hearing. Mary and Mark Saroy, Community Development. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Roberts and commissioners. Today's public hearing gives the board and the public the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback about our Community Development Fiscal Year 2025-26 Annual Action Plan. This year's plan is the fourth year of our five-year consolidated plan. Following today's hearing, a final plan will be produced and submitted to the board for approval at a future board meeting consent agenda prior to the submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. Today, I do have Mark Saroy, Senior Policy Performance and Research Analyst with H3S Housing and Community Development, to provide you with a brief review of the elements of the draft plan for consideration and comment. I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you and good morning to Administrator Schmidt and commissioners. Before I begin, I'd like to thank all of you for participating in National Association of Counties, NACO, that really advocates for these funds at the federal level. So thank you all for doing that work. The purpose of the annual plan is to provide accountability and transparency of the community development program to the community, to the board, and to HUD. The plan also includes three grant applications, the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. While we have not yet received the precise amounts of those grants from HUD, we do need to prepare our plan and prepare to submit that. We also have a contingency plan to address any decreases or increases in our, our planned amount. The public engagement process for this plan began back in October and November of 2023, and the, the amounts for each of the projects were selected through an RFP process that began in November of 2024, with the applications due in December of 2024. To date, we've received funding appreciation letters from the Can Be Adult Center Upwards Boost In-Home Child Care Program, with an additional support letter from the city of Wilsonville. This year, the program's staff will continue to work with community members to identify CDBG-eligible projects, work with community members to clarify project scopes and budgets through our sub-recipient agreements that you all see, conduct our HUD environmental reviews, monitor each project for Davis-Bickett and labor requirements, and then we'll report our project's accomplishments to HUD. Much of the plan is in the format that's required by HUD, but the highlights of the plan include an explanation of our new structure as a Housing and, and Community Development Division to better align our services, projects, and funding. The project activities are also listed in the services. And then there's summaries of activities by the Housing Authority, by Social Services, and by the Continuum of Care to coordinate our services. The next steps that we have is that the board has time to review the annual plan and provide any comments. The comment period closes April 28th. As Mary said, the final action plan will be brought before you with the actual grant amounts. The plan is usually due at HUD no later than May 15th, but we'll, we'll have to wait until the awards come from the federal government. This concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you. Any comments from my colleagues? I see Martha. Go ahead.
I just want to thank you for mentioning Community Development Block Grants because I was on a call with my Community Economic Development and Workforce Committee yesterday, and we are tracking, you know, the dollars very closely. We're lobbying extremely hard at the national level because I know sometimes people think, well, why are you going to NACO? Well, this is why we go to NACO, is because there are things that are happening at I know that we had a presentation once about HUD possibly having an opportunity for daycare funding with the co-location of daycare with some of the new housing we have. Do you know anything about that, or have we...
We haven't seen any proposals for that yet.
Okay, but there is an element of that, I think, isn't there? I mean, I remember having a meeting with HUD and with our Early Learning Hub at one point discussing that, but who knows what's going to happen to the funding at this point?
Yeah.
So, if there is any funding, yeah.
We can certainly keep an eye out. I've been hearing, but I think it's through some of your inquiry, Commissioner, but we'll certainly keep an eye out for that opportunity.
That would be great, Mary, because it makes a lot of sense. I know that there are some barriers, not the least of which is it becomes a commercial use, and that ups the cost of the building. So, we've been trying to figure out a way how to work around that, or not work around it, but at least in certain instances where it makes sense in order to allow people to have childcare and get a job and be prosperous. That might be a good way to go. So, thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to just... I'm always kind of a big advocate of this program, and it's one of those ones that is well-thought-out, I believe, you know, and delivers projects and resources to communities that need it the most. And I just want to just say, appreciate your work and do a shout-out to all the projects we've done. The other thing maybe that people don't know is that, you know, your department, your work has made sure those dollars are spread out across the county regardless, so it's both urban and rural. And I just hope the funding is not in jeopardy. I just hope that we can continue doing it at the scale we've done it. So, thanks again for your work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And thanks. Commissioner West?
Yeah, thank you. This money gets a lot of bang for the buck, and it truly goes to moderate, to low-income individuals, to help them directly, right into Main Street. It eliminates slums and blights in communities and addresses urgent community needs. And the Community Development Block Grants, they're flexible funding sources from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. With that said, I know, I believe these are by statute, but please let us... There's still a lot of uncertainty. Let us know how we can advocate to HUD and maybe have a voice to HUD and say, hey, you know, this isn't waste, fraud, and abuse, this is essential funding for the reasons I just mentioned. And so, please, as elected, help us be prepared to advocate for these funds. I don't... I think I speak for everybody on this board. We would advocate for these funds and go to the mat for them. And some of the great things that they do the public may not know is housing, infrastructure, public service for like job training, youth programs, senior services, and economic development, which as we face very uncertain economic times here in the Portland metro, that is important more than ever, and then planning and administration, so just what it costs to manage these programs. I can already think of a few things where I think some of these funds will go to that will absolutely be essential for like the Milwaukee area that I think people, that entities will be applying for. So, thank you, but I just ask, please help us be, not to have to be reactionary, but advocating, even if we need to now, to say, not this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that very much.
Great. Well, I don't see any other comments from my colleagues, so I'll now open up the public hearing on this specific item. I'll take in person testimony first, and Clerk, would you please moderate testimony for us?
If you are attending this meeting today in person and would like to comment on this specific matter, again, if you are attending in-person day, would like to offer a comment on this specific proposed Community Development Action Plan, I'll ask you to please fill out a blue card and deposit in the box by the door. Cindy Detcher, if you could please come forward. You'll have three minutes. Introduce yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm joined today with Teresa Neff Webster, the Director of Operations for the North Clackamas School District. Cindy Detcher worked diligently with all of you folks on several projects over the years, and we're here just to share our appreciation, particularly for the recently awarded funding from the Clackamas County Community Development Program. It is a great pleasure to know that we have this partnership with both the North Clackamas Parks and Rec District, as well as the county commissioners and the leadership of Gary Schmidt, your county administrator, in securing the Wichita facility back to the community and making sure that we can continue to serve over 15,000 people a year with both services for students experiencing home and food insecurities. We also provide a lot of other services there, as well as some county programs, Head Start, for example. So, we're just here just to share our great appreciation and hoping for our continued partnership, both with the county and with the Parks District. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Right. Any other comments? All right. I'll now close the public hearing portion. Commissioners, any other...
Chair, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you would allow, I'd like to move to online testimony, make sure there's no online access.
Oh, I'm sorry. I stepped ahead today. Thank you.
Apologies, Chair. See, no more blue cards for in-person testimony. If you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to speak on this specific matter, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Melanie Farr. Melanie Farr, I'll meet you, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Upwards and the City of Wilsonville, I just wanted to sincerely thank Mark Saroy, Clackamas County's Community Development Team, and the Board of Commissioners for supporting the Boost program and the micro-enterprise childcare providers who need it most. Just a quick synopsis, the Boost empowers the low-to-moderate income in-home childcare providers with personalized coaching and digital tools to optimize operations, increase their revenue, and expand access to both quality and affordable childcare. So, by providing these services free of charge, we strengthen both small businesses and local economies, creating local jobs and increasing childcare availability for the working families in our community. So, Commissioners Schrader and Commissioners West, to your point, the Boost program actually addresses both childcare needs as well as economic development, encouraging economic development in the community as well. So, I want to thank you for your support and also give a shout-out to Mark, who has made this process very, very streamlined and efficient, so thank you, Mark, as well.
All right. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to testify on this specific issue and you are attending virtually, I'll ask you to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Again, this is a final call for public testimony on this specific matter of a proposed Community Development 2025 Action Plan. Mr. Chair, I see no one else for public comment.
Got it right that time. Okay, thank you. I'll now close the public hearing section, and I know my colleagues have a few comments. Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, I just want to ask, when can we visit the facility? Basically, I'd like to get a tour of it. I'd like to see what you've done. It's a good model, and it would behoove us to maybe look at that model across this county, because most of the county is a childcare desert, and we know if we provide childcare to folks who have, you know, the lower income to medium income, that gives them, again, as I keep saying, it gives them a leg up on the prosperity ladder. So, can we... Hopefully, we could arrange that. I guess, Cindy, I'd like to be in touch, invite my colleagues to come along, and let's take a look at what they've done in your hometown of Wilsonville, then. Yay! Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, the plan will return to us as a final decision at a future business meeting, so we'll move on to our next agenda item. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Our next public hearing is Building Code and Plumbing Fee Schedule Modifications. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, and Cheryl Bell, Assistant Director of Transportation and Development, will present.
Good morning, Chair Robertson and Commissioners. I'm just going to turn it over to Assistant Director for Development, Cheryl Bell, to kind of run through the summary, and we'll be happy to answer your questions when she gets complete.
Great. Well, good morning, Chair Robertson, Commissioners. We're here today for a public hearing on fee modifications to the Department of Transportation and Development's Building Code Division and Plumbing Fee Schedules, with a proposed effective date of July 1, 2025. In an April 1 policy session, the Board approved advancing forward to hearing four straightforward modifications to these fee schedules. The first modification proposed, and as we heard a little bit earlier in some early testimony, is an increase in the minimum permit fee and hourly rate from $85 to $120. Clackamas County has not increased building permit fees since 2010, and this one-time reset is to adjust for the inflationary increases in that program over that 15-year period. In reviewing comparable jurisdictions in the Portland metro area, the lower end of a comparable minimum permit fees is about $117, and we got new information since the packet was provided. The upper end is now $211. By setting our proposal to $120, we're at the lower end of the market comparables, but providing adequate revenue to maintain service levels for our customers. Setting this fee, increasing this fee also helps us recoup costs for some permits, like a water heater that has the minimum permit fee, where the fee needs to cover the administrative costs, both of the costs in the office and then all of the inspection costs, administrative drive time in performing the inspection. The second modification proposed is, beginning July 1, 2026, that the annual CPI adjustment policy be applied to the Building Code Division and Plumbing Fee Schedules. The Department proposes applying the annual CPI adjustment starting in '26-'27, so not this next fiscal year. In implying the CPI, the Department will round adjusted fees down to reduce administrative requirements and cash handling. Applying the CPI to these fees allows the program to meet inflationary increases in costs with minor fees, which can be easier than large one-time resets, and that gets us some fee predictability moving forward. The third proposal is adoption of a $75 minor label inspection fee. This fee and providing these minor label inspections is mandated by the state. We've been doing this work already, we just don't have an adopted fee in our fee schedule, so we'd like to adopt this fee to recoup some costs. And lastly, there's some minor housekeeping changes noted in the fee schedule to descriptions and fee names. These do not impact the fees, they're just for clarity, for letting people know what those fees are for. The process for adopting modifications to building codes fees is established under ORS 455 and OAR 918, and these statutes require that building codes programs follow additional rules and requirements when seeking fee modifications. One of these specific requirements is that we provide the opportunity for public comment during a public hearing. It's due to this specific requirement that we're holding this public hearing today and affording this opportunity to comment. Following today's public hearing, staff are respectfully requesting that the Board and County Commissioners direct staff to include approved DTD Building Code Division and DTT Plumbing Fee Modifications in the master fee schedules to be adopted as part of the annual budget process. Before we move forward to the hearing, we were copied on the letter provided by the Portland Area Home Builders Association that was submitted to the Board yesterday, and obviously, we're in the room for the testimony. I do want to say, we've had great conversation with Isaac, and we've been communicating. He noted that in his testimony. We do have a few things that we can provide some context on based off of those materials. HBA noted fee increase that took effect last year. I wanted to make sure that we were clear that Building Code Division has not received a fee increase since 2010. And prior to this last year, the last departmental fee package, which didn't include building codes fees, was approved by the Board in April of 2022. We also, there was some conversation about fee predictability. We're hoping with this one-time reset and adding the CPI that we do have greater predictability moving forward and using just small, just using that CPI to do small increases. We think that's a really important fee predictability for our building community. There were some comments about dedicated fund and reallocating funds to the Building Codes Program. By state statute, the Building Codes Program is required to be a dedicated fund. It needs to maintain its own revenue and its own reserves, so there is not an ability to either take those funds out or bring other funds in. There was also some notes on SDCs. We don't deny the impact of SDCs on our building community. We understand it is incredibly impactful, and reasonable costs for builders are incredibly important. While building permit fees are the trigger to collect SDC and other pass-through fees, these are not fees for the Building Codes Program itself. SDCs are for special districts under separate programs and governing bodies and outside the Building Codes Program. As I noted, we're required to be a dedicated fund, so our fees really are direct service, fees for service for the services we're providing our building community. By raising this minimum fee, we're aiming to get cost recovery for all of our work, especially those permits at that lower level that is covered by that minimum permit fee. We also understand that HBA had some concerns with the SDCs proposed by Clackamas County Water and Environment Services. We've been in conversation with HBA today and provided them some ways that they can provide testimony on that specific proposal that will be coming to you, and we've made sure they have contact information with Wes.
Yeah, so just briefly, there's a couple of comments I'd like to respond to that were received earlier this morning. I just want to highlight the fact that we have no desire or are not glad to be here to be discussing fee dialogue with you. Okay? One of the things that should be, just it's important to remember and to understand, it's been some time since we've been able to have a discussion around fees, because the Board made a conscious decision to stop and pause with the county administrator and others to develop the fee policy, the cost recovery policy, because that cost recovery policy gave us more direction and guidance on where to move forward and what the Board's direction was regarding that. And that's been adopted, and you see some of those adjustments in here. Again, we're running those CPI elements down. Second is, you know, the dialogue. I want to highlight the fact that there have been multiple discussions, again, about fees, and that is primarily associated with the specific notice that's required by statute related to building fees versus the other discussion. It became very convoluted when you put all that together with the requirements the state had regarding these fees versus the other fees, and we felt it detrimental to the larger discussion to convolute those two issues together. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Commissioner Savis?
This is just more of a comment. I remember when I first took office in 2011, on the heels of that recession, that I heard from a number, including the HBA, a number of builders and so forth, with concerns about getting our permits issued, right? And we were light on staff in areas, and I think how permit delays and all those things were of the greatest concern. You know, fees and costs are always, SDCs especially, I think have always been, you know, a delicate conversation. But as we are, I think we've been, not just DTD, but all the related, SDC-related things like Wes, for example, pretty diligent in making sure we're delivering on those investments in fees for, you know, capacity, and I would think that the Clackamas, that pipeline that we're doing is a great example, and others, projects that are in the way. So, our capital plan is going to that, and if, had we not, frankly, had we not made those investments and had the SDCs available to do that, we wouldn't be able, Happy Valley, for example, would not be able to be growing. We couldn't issue permits because there's not enough wastewater capacity. So, we've delivered. And I was hearkened, thinking about today's session here on this topic, and realizing that the state legislature, there's a bill that to, for, out there that would expedite, really, the turnaround on permit fees, and I'm not sure where that's going to go. I doubt if it's funded, highly doubt, right? And I think from what I heard, it's not going to happen as far as funding, but if it is a mandate, I don't know how we do that. I don't know how we do that, the resources. I think that back when I took office, gasoline was under $2 a gallon. I got pictures of the signs. So, here we are in a highly inflationary period, and I don't, you know, no one, I don't like to raise fees at all. And I, you know, I know your department, I think that the directive from this, from the Board here was, and having the flexibility, so not only could you increase fees, but you could also decrease them as needed. So, you've got the flexibility to make sure, and it's cost recovery, we don't have a profit built into this, but we are under very, we kind of mentioned earlier, you know, we are under some very financial constraint, a lot of financial constraints, and I know a lot of departments have cut, and, you know, the Chair and I talked about one department, I think that needs at least two more people, but we don't have the money to do that. And so, the needs out there are tremendous, so I'm hoping that we can, you know, be cautious and adjust, you know, that, and I think that... how we do that with resources. I think that back when I took office, gasoline was under $2 a gallon. I got pictures of the signs. So here we are in a highly inflationary period, and I don't, you know, no one, I don't like to raise fees at all. And, you know, I know your department, I think that the directive from this, from the Board here was, and having the flexibility, so not only could you increase fees, but you could also decrease them as needed. So you've got the flexibility to make sure. And it's cost recovery. We don't have a profit built into this, but we are under very, we kind of mentioned earlier, you know, we are under some very financial constraint, a lot of financial constraints. And I know a lot of departments have cut, and, you know, the Chair and I talked about one department. I think that needs at least two more people, but we don't have the money to do that. And so the needs out there are tremendous. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, be cautious and adjust, you know, that. And I think that inflationary index will help us, you know, make sure that there's no big jolts in the future. So I appreciate this. I know it's difficult, but I just want to make those, make those comments.
Can I remind you, I mean, this is actually a kudos to the Board. I mean, we'll back up. Before I say that, during that downturn of '07, '08, we had to make the difficult decision to right-size our services, and that was a very, very difficult decision. We had to, actually, had a reduction in our building services staff of almost 50%. And, but we right-sized to the market that we were having to serve at that point in time and the dollars that we had. Secondly, I want to remind all of you and highlight the good work that this Board has done, because in regards to the SDCs that we control, transportation SDCs, this was a dialogue that was board-driven, I think originally, the dialogue around how do we apply those SDCs and can we right-size them to certain size of residential units, et cetera. And I think we were one of the first regions in the area that really took a look at, like, right-sizing a residential SDC, doing reductions for SDCs if you have multi-use developments, really doing a deeper dive into the trip generation, because these are transportation-related, and what those cause and what they should really cost. And we've done a really deep dive in that. In fact, I don't believe we've increased our transportation SDC in some time, although we have a CPI built into it. We haven't found the need.
Last time was 2021. It was under 1% when we did that CPI adjustment.
And the cost to pave or build a mile of road since 2021 has significantly increased.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner West.
We, it was out of order, but we did hear testimony today from a representative from the Home Builders Association. It sounds like that work's been collaborative. It sounds like he did bring up maybe a different solution or way of us to look at this. Have you guys, have you guys addressed that concern with the HBA or that idea specifically? And then we're a little bit out of order, so people, it was, you know, 30 minutes ago or so when we heard him testify. And thank you, by the way, for your testimony from the HBA.
The discussion isn't, or the strategy isn't new. It's a discussion around delaying or phasing or things of that nature. One of the, one of the biggest component of this is essentially the base rate fee. And what our intent is, is to right-size, is to get that to market right now so that future fee increases are more microscopic and more predictable. They're more CPI-related, which is what we keep, what we have heard from the marketplace. The marketplace wants to have predictability. You talk about the phasing and the delay and the right-sizing. We could have a discussion around some adjustments, but right now, I mean, I think the difficult decision to make is to right-size the fee at its current condition and then make microscopic adjustments at a later date. Where it really hits the marketplace with the builders that I work with, and I'm, that I know, is when we have seismic shifts in fees. And I'm not sure if you've been tracking the fee discussion regionally. We have had some partners in other areas that did almost a doubling of their fees in one fiscal swoop. And I don't know the details around that, but those seismic shifts are the ones that really, really impact the marketplace, so.
And I think we look at the housing crisis. You've heard me say from this digest plenty of times, it's, in my opinion, and least in this region, a direct result of specific policies. And then we get down to this point. We should look at every tax dollar and scrutinize it. That's fair, right? But, you know, we have these smaller fees now that we're like, oh, my God, it's just another fee, and we have population loss, and it's all tied together. It's all expenses to the public in some way or another, and they do add up. And, you know, we haven't had a political class willing to actually, like, make bold necessary moves to deal with the housing crisis and land use laws and things like that so that working families maybe can have a home or place of their own, and that we can actually have, you know, large amounts of development of literally every kind of housing, because we need it all. We're so far behind. I just, as we all are, I think you are too. And I think, you know, we don't have a choice, and we have to. But the truth is principally is, like, the region's got to get it together on these expenses. Like, we can't just keep, I mean, it's just like a never-ending, there's never, you never come, it's like, we would like to decrease this for the taxpayer. Like, you never, and not your fault. I know you loved you, Dan. But like, that's never the message to the taxpayer. We're going to, so I feel, I think Commissioner Savas spoke to it. Thank you to the HBA. We're very sensitive to your guys' concerns. Please know that. And please keep bending our ear on how this impacts your membership's work that they do. You know, they aren't always treated fairly, but now they're asked to partner directly in fixing this crisis that we all face. So thank you to still staying in the game with us and fighting. I'll be supporting this because I don't think I have a choice. I try, I think you guys work really hard to find that fairness line. But this speaks to an overall Oregon problem, an overall economic downturn, facing doom loops, a lack of accountability to the current political cast that I believe played a large role in getting us here. So we have to just be like, as Oregonians get together and make some common sense solutions moving forward and maybe be less tribalistic. So that's my overall bigger viewpoint towards this. But come on, Oregon, we got to, we got to figure this out. So, thank you.
All right. Not seen any other comments. I'll know now, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just one more. I just want to just add something I probably should have mentioned, and that is, Dan, I, you know, you know, we've been through a lot of budget cycles together, and you've, we've had to cut staff in DTD over the time. So you don't have as robust even a staff. And I just, again, I worry about this legislative direction if indeed we're forced to expedite and knowing that. So, you know, in lieu of raising the fees, we are only forced to lay off people, right? It's, it's a mathematical equation, right? So it's one or the other. We're not choosing to lay off anyone here. We're trying to make sure the service is there, and we can, we can provide the permits as timely as possible. And I think that was probably, when I came here, that was the biggest issue. It wasn't the cost as much as it was the timeliness of delivering. And DTD stepped up their game, and I appreciate that as far as delivering the permits and doing great work. So recognizing that, I know we're, we're a delicate balance, but we're, you know, I'm, we got to do, as Chair, not Chair, but Commissioner West just mentioned, you know, no one wants to raise the fees, but we got to make sure that we can deliver the service. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, and I also want to mention, I'm not a big fee proponent either, particularly with the home builders, because we all know the constraints that they have to work under, which is the market. And right now, the market is unstable, and supply chains are being disrupted. Lumber I imagine that we get from Canada is now not available, or there are tariffs someday, one day there's a tariff, and one day there's next. So I just want to say, I appreciate, I appreciate the home builders coming forward, and we're all dealing with the uncertainty of what the market is actually moving towards. But at the same time, as I said, we're not, what we're really looking at is cost recovery, but because of market instability, again, that's kind of what happened. And as you said, you haven't changed that fee in how many years?
2010 was the last time.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's been significant, you know, inflation and other things happening as well. So I'll be supporting this as well, but I hope we can continue to have a conversation with the home builders, because this is really just going to all get passed off the consumer. And if housing affordable, affordability is an issue, well, that's, we have to figure this out. So thank you guys for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, you reiterated, it hasn't been looked at since 2010. I think the proposal you bring forward is really well thought out and logical. As you point out, the fee increase, you know, $85 and moving it to 125. And as you pointed out, the lower end of that fee is 117, the higher, upper end is 211. And I think it is very wise to see the small incremental increases versus shell-shocked on getting a huge increase at one time. And while at the same point, I think all of us are concerned about affordable housing and creating more housing in the county, and so just cautiously, really kind of scrutinize every increase that we can, because it does have an impact. So I think credit to you for your hard work and coming up, I think, with a methodology that, that really kind of does make sense. So with that, no other comments. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing portion of this, for this specific item. So we'll take in-person testimony first, so I'm going to turn over to my dear friend, the clerk, who will moderate the testimony.
If you are attending this meeting in person today and would like to speak on this specific public hearing on Building Code and Plumbing Fee Schedule modifications, I ask you to please make sure you fill out a blue card and deposit it in the box by the door. Seeing no in-person testimony, I'll now move to virtual testimony. If you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to speak on this specific matter for the Building Code and Plumbing Fee Schedule modifications, I ask you to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Mr. Chair, I see no one for in-person or virtual public testimony.
All right. Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing portion. Commissioner's comments?
Chair, just one technicality. I want to make sure that on the record that Mr. Ambrosio's testimony is recognized in the hearing, even though he spoke earlier. I want to make sure that is conveyed in the record.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Savas. So do I have a motion?
I move we approve the modified Building Code and Plumbing Fee Schedule.
I will second that.
All right. So Commissioner Savas has moved to approve the modified Building Code and Plumbing Fee Schedule. Commissioner West has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Mr. Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Gary, what is up next? And thank you both very much.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Item A, elected officials. One, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. B, Transportation and Development. One, approval of a grant application to the Oregon Department of Transportation for a marketing campaign to reduce driving under the influence. Grant value is $310,957 for one year. Funding is to the Oregon Department of Transportation and a required match of $60,957 in county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of an engineering contract with David Evans and Associates for the Southeast Bull Run Road and Bull Run River Bridge Project. Contract value is $1,533,817.94 for two years. Funding is to the Oregon Department of Transportation and $157,523.10 of county road funds. No county general funds are involved. C, Health, Housing and Human Services. One, approval of an amendment to the subrecipient grant agreement with Parrot Creek Child and Family Services for alcohol and drug abuse treatment support. Amendment value is $65,242.45 for four months. Total agreement value is $513,876.35 for 18 months. Funding is to the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for rental and utility assistance to aid and assist clients. Amendment value is $40,483.37 for six months. Total agreement value is $17,509,981.22 for 18 months. Funding is to the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with FOIA Health for development and design services for the Recovery Center. Agreement value is $2,808,509 for 22 months. Funding is through Trillium Community Health Plan, opioid settlement, and supportive housing services measure funds. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of the Older Americans Act Social Services Area Plan. Plan value is $2,086,000. Funding is to the United States Department of Health and Human Services and a required match of $70,000 in budgeted county general funds. Five, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Sandy for a community service officer and vehicle for homeless services. Agreement value is $292,351 for three years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. D, Technology Services. One, approval of a board order to authorize a purchase order to Dell Marketing for CrowdStrike cybersecurity software. Purchase order value is $330,961 for two years. Funding is to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Oregon Emergency Management, and up to $311,847 of budgeted departmental cost allocations, which includes a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Two, approval of a purchase order with CDWG for replacement servers and associated maintenance services. Purchase order value is $659,072.72. Funding is through budgeted departmental cost allocations, which does include a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Mr. Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Any consent agenda? I was going to turn your light on there. Oh, okay. Commissioner West, go ahead.
I can speak to this now or when the motion is made. I'll make a motion right after this. I, you know, I know that consent agendas aren't always all that spicy and exciting. However, there's one thing in here that we moved to consent agenda that is a big idea that I'm just like cheering about and smiling. Thank you, Cindy, for all your hard work on this, is that there is a, we just, we just put out a recipient for a grant agreement for FOIA Health for development and designs of the Recovery Campus, $2.8 million. It's a multi-acre, state-of-the-art, trauma-informed recovery campus, like nothing else in the region that we are building here in Clackamas. And it is becoming somewhat of a crown jewel here in the metro area in this space. And I just want to just point that out, because I am just like, that just made my whole day. Thank you, Cindy, for your hard work and all the staff. This is one big step forward towards the Recovery Campus, and it's in our consent agenda. And with that, Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
And I second.
All right. Commissioner West has moved to approve the revised consent agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? I see Commissioner Savas has commented.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I knew Commissioner West was going to point that out. I thought maybe he might pull it from the consent.
Oh, God, no.
But, yeah, this is, this is a great, this is a great turning point. This is something that the property in the site, something that goes actually back to the time of the Venners Village, actually, as the site for the second shelter. And there will be housing as part of this ultimately in the future. But I want to thank staff and everyone and the Board's support for making this all come together, and this is the beginning.
Yeah, so cool.
Very exciting. Chair, you'll back.
All right. Hearing no other discussion, clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you again, everybody, for your hard work on that. It is a huge accomplishment. So thank you, Cindy. Gary, what's next?
Next is county administrator update, and during my time today, I would like to review with you the commissioner appointment timeline options. You discussed that earlier this week. Staff has already worked diligently to prepare for you a second option for your consideration on your review timeline. Andrew, we'll show this on the screen here for you. It's online as well, and we printed a copy for you. So page two or attachment one of the packet. This was version one of the timeline that we shared with you on Tuesday. Just a quick recap, because this is still on the table for now. The application period closed yesterday, Wednesday, April 9. There were 59 applicants for this position, four, 59. Our amazing county clerk McMullin has already reviewed the applications for eligibility, and they are all eligible. So that's, we're already ahead of schedule. So by the end of today, you will receive the full printed packets of all of the applicant's resume, cover letters, and applications under the version one here. Next Thursday, a week from today, April 17, at your business meeting, you would narrow down the 59 applicants to your top five or six candidates. Those top five or six candidates would be interviewed at a public interview on Tuesday, April 22, for approximately 45 minutes for each candidate. And then Thursday, April 24, at your business meeting, you would deliberate and make a final decision. So this is version one we shared with you earlier. The reason this is so truncated is that we, you do not have all four commissioners present after April 25 until May 15. So that's why we offered this first version, so you could all be present. All right. I'll move on to version two, which is the updated version for your consideration today. Again, the applications have closed. Clerk McMullin has already finished her review, so you'll get all of the applications today. This gives two full weeks for you, commissioners, to review all the applications. And then on Thursday, April 24, at your business meeting, you would narrow the candidate pool down to your top five or so candidates. Then the public interview of those top five or so candidates would be Friday, May 16. Commissioner Schrader, you are back, and this is before Commissioner West, you leave. So this is a time all four of you would be here. We would do those interviews again, the same, about 45 minutes for each candidate, public interviews. And then that following Monday, three days later, Monday, May 19, again, you're all still in town. We'd have a public meeting for still in town, we'd have a public meeting for you to make your final decision. This is the only window, again, when you're all here, under version two. If you do not like version two, the next, verbally, the next option when you all would be back would be June. So I don't think you want to wait that long for your appointment. That all, sorry, there?
Third week of June, because I'll be a military.
Third week in June, that's kind of a long time to wait. So these are two versions for your consideration. Staff and I would appreciate your feedback today on which of the two versions, or if you want to hybrid or mix the two. Would love your feedback, so we can start getting notice out, please.
Right. Colleagues, your thoughts? Commissioner West.
Am I right that we are looking at this, again, this timeline because we want to, like, a decent background check to avoid kind of any unnecessary negative news, drama, or distractions to the Board of Commissioners? We've been through enough of that with former Commissioner Fireside, so we'd like to make sure somebody is able to hit the ground running without any of those distractions. Is that, is that part of this process? And in the original April timeline, where would, where would that fit? Like, where are we seeing, and how long, again, does that, that process take to do a background check?
Thank you. I've confirmed a background check takes two days.
Oh.
It's very quick. The only reason we've changed these timelines is so that all four of you could physically be present for the interviews. That's the only reason.
Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, so just to be clear, this can kind of get confusing. So we're not going to, how many people applied?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, okay. So we're at 59 applicants, and we're not going to, we're not going to background check 59 people. We're going to background the final five.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you know, I'll take responsibility, as I mentioned Tuesday, that I was looking for more time to vet my top five from 59 down, now 59, down to five. So I wanted to do at least my little bit of research, and I haven't looked at any of the applications of yet. I'm going to wait for the whole packet and look at them all at once in the same frame of mind and try to narrow that down. So I appreciate more time, because I thought that the version one timeline was just too tight to do that. So hopefully, you know, we can discover as much as we can on our individual work that we're going to be doing on, on some of the candidates. Fortunately, I agree, I don't want to wait till June, third week of June, and, you know, you know, we could make this happen faster had it not been for, you know, scheduling. So I'm, I'm okay with version two. So I would support version two.
Martha?
I can do either. I'm just wondering about a background check. Would that have brought to, like, Commissioner Fireside's issues? That's what I'm, that's what I'm questioning. I mean, we do a background check, but there, because that was more of a political, I hate to say it, it was more of a political dilemma in the end. I, is that what we're looking for? Is criminal culpability with a background check? Or what do you, I mean, what do you really hope to?
I think, I'd like to have Gary respond.
The basic background check we would do, unless you direct otherwise, is a criminal background check. So it checks for any prior criminal activity that's in this, that's in the system. So I'm not aware that Commissioner Fireside had any prior.
Right. So we wouldn't have detected it anyway at that point, yeah. So I, I think we could do it more quickly, myself, but I'll be honest with you, I can go either way. Whatever you guys want to do, I'll accommodate.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I know, I want you, would like to try to accommodate, you know, Mr. Savas, if you, if you, if you really feel that's, because we all have different work styles and, you know, that wouldn't, you know, make me feel, you know, as if we were missing anything. It's, I think it's, you know, it's a compromise, but not a bad one, so, just saying.
Yeah, my thoughts would be, I'm leaning towards version one. The only reason is, is because there is such a long lapse. It's almost a month of time, and I think that I also want to validate and respect Commissioner Savas, concerned to want to get through it. I'm also looking at Gary and how he feels, how long it would take to do the background. And I just think that for a number of reasons, the, if we could make this decision, you know, with making sure we have all the best information in front of us, if we could do it sooner, I think it would make things easier. But I did want to give you a chance to respond, Paul, you know.
Yeah, I, again, I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, there's adequate time to go through the 59 applications and do as much of my own homework, and make sure that each of the 59 applicants are given some thorough, you know, not only reading their applications, but also any kind of research and so forth I can find. But I just thought, you know, the way the version one lays out, it's very compressed to do a lot of that, and I would hate to find out that, you know, we could, maybe if there's a top five, if one or two, maybe, you know, we find out later on. I just want to make sure we're doing our best to make sure that the top five are as viable as possible, and I think that rushing into that, so to speak, at least I would feel rushed, that maybe, you know, we, we, because we're all, I guess, I guess the proposal, we haven't said this yet, but as I heard, if we, each of us pick five people, and then there's a, there's a rounding, wouldn't that would be happening under version two, Gary?
Either version one or version two. You each pick your top five, but that may not be, you may not all agree with the top five, so you'll have to have a discussion.
Right, so we have that. So my point is, is that when we get to that point, that at least the, put the five on, I put forward, which is probably going to be different than the rest, but I want to make sure the five I put forward is, are, is viable and acceptable as possible.
Gary.
Yes. To answer your question, Commissioner, either timeline works. Under version one, it's tight. I mean, it's tight to do that.
That's my point.
We can do it, but it'd be very, very tight. So I always recommend, and so, version three, I was recommending you all be in person for the interviews. I think that's ideal, but the compromise is, is, and Commissioner Schrader, you'd be traveling. If you were remote and the other three were in person, we could do interviews like the first week in May. So it's, version three would be not as long as version two, but that would mean not all of you would be present physically in person.
Yeah, and I'm assuming where I'm going to be, I have, that's the issue, Wi-Fi. As you know, I've done Wi-Fi in very interesting places as I do this, so I would prefer to physically be here.
Yeah.
So I'd like to be, you know, like I said, I would like to be here, because I, I'm assuming I will, but you never know when you're out there, and I'm visiting my grandchildren, so that's what's.
So then version one and two are your, basically your two choices.
Commissioner West.
I think that all of us being here is important. We can't handle technical difficulties, can't hear applicants have put through a long process and quickly follow the timeline given to them. They deserve all four of us being here to interview them, whoever the top five is. So I do agree with you, Commissioner Schrader, on that. So I don't, I don't know if the board has appetite for that option. We all do have different work styles. I know that I've already read through a number of these and scribbled all over the documents and all of those things as I work towards my top five. But here's the, here's the other thing, is that if we do go to the May meetings, they are untraditional days that for us meeting. We're, we're bringing in staff on a Friday, which for this would be, would not be normal. And then on Monday, the next day, right, we would take the weekend to kind of wrap our brains around the interviews and then come back on that Monday. And then that new commissioner hits the ground running into budget week, like, literally hits the ground with very little to no prep. So if you're applying, and you think you might be in the top five, I recommend doing a little homework now on budget week if you're optimistic about your opportunity. But that's just also the way it goes. We're all put in a situation we don't want to be in right now. I, I could go either way, too. I mean, I, I've done a lot of late-night reading, extracurricular reading to get there, to be honest, like, knowing that we were on a timeline, the original timeline. We're all like crazy busy right now. We're all working 40-plus hours for sure, more than 40 hours a week right now. I mean, me and the chair laughing about it all the time as we drag in and out of the office here and all over the state. So I don't know. I'm open to whatever. I feel like the, I don't want to, I don't even want to be a swing vote here, but I'm not really giving an answer. I'm kind of squishy like Martha on this one.
Well, Craig, and you'd rather do it sooner than later.
You'd rather just bust through it.
I would, yeah.
I think for a number of reasons. I mean, if there was a way we could push through it and get this done, I think it would help us move forward as a whole. We have a lot of other things that are kind of pending as the retreat, and I definitely, you know, can hear Paul's sentiments of wanting to get through it. I think, I guess, you know, I, I know it's going to take a lot of time, and so I would just, I would be leaning towards version one, to be honest.
Well.
So I think we're, I need a decision kind of from you, too.
This job is tough.
I think, at least I understand Paul's, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but I see you as leaning towards this version two. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I, I am leaning version two. I guess I, I'm just bringing, you know, just a lot of experience of going through that and, and, you know, recalling criticisms and recalling unforeseen things come up, and so I, just knowing how politically charged things are more than ever, I, I think it would, again, I won't repeat what I've said, but I just think it's, I think that the times and the politics and everything that's going on, I think it really requires as much thorough work on our part as possible, and I'm glad you're all as prepared. I didn't know what the total number would be, you know. A few days ago, we heard there were 30, so there's been a last rush of folks, so, again, I want to be able to talk to folks, just like you do a background check when you're hiring someone. I mean, I'm an employer. I mean, I did, I did a lot. I called up former employers and so forth, and not that I would be doing that exclusively, but if I hadn't, if I was stuck on someone, so that, that takes time. I mean, it just takes, it just takes time. There's 60.
So it's really your background check that you're talking about?
Yeah, 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 my, my initial, my, my homework.
Additional, additional just calling and hearing from people.
Yeah. This, this job demands a lot. I mean, I'm sure, you know, I talk to people that have maybe had some public service and ever, but you look at the size of our budget. I mean, I, that's a, that's a big document, but that just gives you a sense of how much work there is in this county. And, you know, I know our chair is, is drinking from a fire hose, and I applaud him for all the extra time perhaps he's put in or sacrificed in his personal life to do this job. It's a lot. I mean, it's a lot. So while I recognize that, that work ethic is not necessarily understood by a lot of the applicants, I, I think that things like the work ethic and things, things of that, how people think, and, and hopefully, it's, again, nonpartisan, nonpolitical as much as possible, that those things and attributes are, you know, vetted out, so that my top five are going to, I hopefully will be, reflect some of those ideals.
All right, thanks, Paul. So in order to give staff direction, kind of looking at you, Mr. West, as to.
Martha, what did you say?
So what do I say? Oh, now I'm the monkey in the middle. Listen, I'm, I, I do really, listen, if we pick somebody good, you know, the budget argument's very compelling to me, because it's a big budget, but particularly if we pick people who are competent, they could probably get up the speed pretty quick and just give them some extra time. So I'm okay, I'm okay physically being here if that's what we need to do, the second, I mean, the, which option?
Option two.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that. We'd all be here. You know, Paul wants to have some extra time. I'm, I'm okay with that. I do worry about letting it go too long, but, you know, whoever's going to be here is going to be here for at least two years, right? So, so I would just say, let's just go ahead and accommodate at this point. I'm, I'm all right with that.
Okay, I will agree to accommodate it.
But it's not my first preference. I will tell you.
Gary, sounds like you have direction.
I feel like I can feel the tension from the county and from the room itself, like, let's get her done! And so I apologize if we're going to punt a little bit for a few weeks, but.
So Commissioner Savas, you're going to have to give us an update on all your phone calls, okay?
So is that clear enough, Gary?
I'm hearing version two.
Yes, it's just a version two.
And start to make arrangements, yes.
All right.
All right, thank you. That is my update. Back to you, Chair.
Yes, well, it's on the agenda next. Anything else?
No, last item is Commissioner Communications.
Okay, all right. So Martha, you're up again, Commissioner Communication.
Okay, thank you for that, Chair. Let me see, I pulled something up. While I, when I was, when I was reading through my emails, I saw that Gary had given us an administrators, administrators' housing task force, and since that's such a big deal for us, I thought I'd share some of that information publicly. And a few things I thought were salient were the Clackamas Village construction is well underway. It's going to be an estimated completion on May 5th, and we'll have an opening event on May 14th with both Chair Roberts and Vice Chair Savas speaking. We're working on the stabilization center, and construction is also proceeding with estimated completion before the end of the year. In consultation with the service provider, H3S is adjusting the layout of the 23-hour crisis center to improve patient monitoring and care. The costs associated with this design would fit within the existing budget. HAC, Housing Authority of Clackamas County Public Housing Repositioning, we've been working on this for years, ladies and gentlemen. That'll become to a policy session in June for an update, and the progress of the scattered sites for sale and removal of Clackamas Heights houses. What we're trying to do there, and we've been trying to do this even when Chuck Robbins was still here, which was, I don't know, how, how long has he been retired? At least five or six years?
Twelve years.
About 12 years? Oh, God. No wonder, I have no sense of time. Okay. But we had been talking about that 12 years ago, and it's finally coming to fruition, and that's where we're trying to be more efficient with the land that we have, increased density. Some of that housing is old World War II housing and isn't properly, you know, you know, doesn't really fit the needs of people now anymore, so we're kind of, they're rather run down. Tuckwillis Springs, we're going to be having a new property manager for that, and we continue to work with the local Gladstone Police Department. And H3S will continue to monitor the progress that we're making at Tuckwillis. These are for the most marginalized and fragile people who have some significant barriers. And because of that, we actually decided that we wanted to make sure that they're getting all the wraparound services they need. So that's a key thing to know. And PSU, this is going to be important for us, because they're going to be finalizing, am I correct, Gary, the 2025 point in time count? And H3S is going to brief us in late April after we have the final numbers. So we'll see if we're still on the same track to reducing homelessness in our county. Last time it showed 65%, but I always remind people that's just a point, that's a point in time count. So it may, so it really just shows a trend, but if the trend is continuing to improve, that's excellent news for our county, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed I think it will. And then, Gary, you guys also suggested communications and public engagement on SHS, overall project, projects, and basically how we're going to be communicating this to the public with all the work we're doing. And I can't take credit for this, this is Gary's report, Gary's job, but I thought the information was critical to let it go to the next, out of the public, to really clarify how aggressively, oh, maybe not aggressive, I don't like that word, assertively, okay, that we are championing homeless, homeless issues and getting people into housing. Again, part of a huge prosperity initiative that we hope to be implementing based on what I'm learning at the National Association of Counties, its jobs, its housing, its wraparound services, many different factors that help people stabilize and become prosperous citizens in a participatory democracy, is what I say. Other than that, I'm continuing to work on my curriculum for school students. I've been talking to folks at Lake Oswego recently about, they have a youth program that they've been operating, and I'm trying to see if we can't do something similar here with the, with the governance curriculum I've collected from the National Association of Counties, and continue to work on childcare. Been kind of tracking all the childcare bills down in Salem and trying to figure out where they are and where they are going. The biggest issue, I think, is the, the physical capacity as part of it, as well as employment. So Clackamas Community College is working on educating folks who want to get into the early childhood, you know, space, and how to work with small children, and again, I believe at least an associate's degree with that, to get that pipeline. believe at least an associate's degree with that, to get that pipeline. And then we continue to talk to the more profit providers, like Kinder Care, as well as other options that we have for childcare, to see if we can expand the actual facilities. Because you need the facilities, the facilities are key, and those facilities actually have a very high bar for how you build it. You have to have special sinks, you have to have smaller toilets, there's a lot of different things that go through permitting that's different for a childcare facility, because it has to be child-friendly. You need to have a certain amount of space outside for children to play and get out in the fresh air, so it is complex. I'm still investigating if there's HUD money to maybe begin to co-locate childcare in some of these projects. There's a big glitch because of, it becomes a commercial, this is the permitting stuff that gets kind of, you know, into the weeds, but it's really a permitting issue, that it's a commercial building, not residential. So that changes how easily we can actually build and co-locate the facility. And I won't go into detail with that, but that's a big issue. So, and that's all I've got today.
Right. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I know we have a luncheon to go to here shortly, but I'm just going to put off the depth of the comment, or things I wanted to speak about today, and it was more about the convergence of issues here today. It's just like, it's just ringing bells in my head, and, you know, there's a great story behind all of this, you know, really, the Veterans Village concept actually was a former employee of Clackamas County who brought this forward, a veteran herself, way back. And Mr. Edgar, Paul Edgar here was today, and he was a member of that committee, and I had met with them, and I had learned a lot at County College about veteran services and the needs, and our veteran service officers and VSOs, and, you know, folks I knew in Clackamas County, and veterans that I knew and served. So, you know, recognizing the need for housing and seeing everything that was happening, but, you know, short story, what's hitting about the convergence of issues here today was the fact that when we tried to, when we got to the point of actually identifying the site and moving on the site, the permitting challenges that were, I won't say cost, but yeah, of course there was costs associated with that, but just realizing how difficult it is to develop anything, whether you're, even if you're your own government, working with your own government constraints, it just amplified really what the home builders, people who actually build homes, or homeowners that are trying to do something on their property and ours, but that was a very, very learned experience. We had a lot of resistance, we had a lot of opportunity, but in the end, everyone came together to make that happen. But, you know, I look forward to telling the full story of that, but I want to make sure that people realize how much credit really needs to go out, to make, that lifted that project up. The Budget Committee of 2016, that was here, and Commissioner Schrader, you and I were the two commissioners that voted for it, but I also want to do a shout-out to each of the Budget Committee members that were here at that time, who made that happen.
Yeah, that was, that was fun times.
Yeah. Administrator Crupp at the time, and so forth, but there's a fascinating story, but I'll just leave it there, and just, great thank you to all of you who know you were involved, we're all part of this. I just wanted to give a heartfelt thanks for everyone, then and forward, and doing everything they're doing today. So again, thank you. Chair, yield back.
Commissioner West.
Thank you. Really, really busy week. Most of my time right now is spent dealing with supportive housing services and the co-chair responsibility with President Lynn Peterson with Metro. It's been an honor to be able to represent Clackamas County and the region as a whole, and champion the successes we have, and hopefully have some of that replicated throughout the greater Portland area. You guys have already heard me talk a lot about that role, but I am, you know, working really, really hard to try to help us with our unhoused community and those that have additional struggles. This last week, or even yesterday, I testified at the Oregon State Legislature on some of the bills that have to do with the money we get from Measure One Ten. Now Measure One Ten's funding mechanisms are still in place, and then that funding is supposed, I'm going to abbreviate because it's quite complicated and nutty, but that funding goes directly to our burns in our counties to provide services. There is an allocation, and an algorithm for that allocation that is wonky and disadvantages Clackamas County significantly, though we're the third largest county and most populated. We are number six in line of all the counties in funding. It's a problem. It is a priority of this board to try to address it, and I just want to give a shout-out to some of our congressional delegate, our Oregon legislative delegation that is fighting for us. I got to testify with them yesterday, Representative Dobson and Hartman sponsored House Bill Thirty-Five Seventy-Six. And then it was also, has some sponsors of Representative Walwyn and Walters, and Senator Meek, and it is in the joint, right now, committee on, oh my gosh, I'm going to get it wrong, Joint Committee on Addiction and Community Safety Response. So if you're listening, and you have forty-eight hours to submit testimony in support of this bill for Clackamas County, and if you're here and you like to write letters, even if it's just one paragraph, please write support for this and talk to your legislators. Testimony was yesterday, but you can still write in support. We need this funding to our burns. They're suffering and facing significant financial downfall because of the funding mechanisms due to Measure One Ten. That whole bill was a whole problem, but we won't get into that, that measure. So help us, we want to protect our burns. Burns are vital to getting the most crucial services to those that need it, especially with substance abuse disorder and behavioral health needs, and they work with our homeless population also. There's two other bills, it's going to get weird for a second, we have Senate Bill Eight Eighty-One, which is a great bill, that's a little bit more comprehensive. We have the bill probably moving forward out of this joint committee, which is Senate Bill Six Ten. There's a ton of amendments to that, we just wanted to look a lot like House Bill Thirty-Five Seventy-Six. And so Senator Lieber and, I think it's Campos yesterday, testified in support of Six Ten, Senate Bill Six Ten. Our delegation in Clackamas County specific bill is House Bill Thirty-Five Seventy-Six. Senate Bill Eight Eighty-One is great. We just need them to take action here. These bills together merge into one grand bill would be fantastic, if it takes action and moves the needle, but our priority is that funding algorithm. It is not good for Clackamas County, it doesn't make a lot of a sense, and we've had a lot of issues in Clackamas County with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission that works under the OHA to give these grants out. And so our bipartisan support in Clackamas County, our legislators have been really great for us on this issue. So we've got some work to do, this is a priority, so if you're an active citizen listening and you want to get involved in the system, please write in support of House Bill Thirty-Five Seventy-Six. You have, I don't know, a day and a half to get your testimony in. And that's all I have.
All right. Thanks. The interest of time, we all do, or the majority does, have a twelve o'clock meeting we need to get to, so I'll keep my comments extremely brief. I just, we had a great joint meeting with Oregon City's Commission, and ours, it was the first ever, and part of the discussion was the future of the courthouse, the old courthouse on Main Street, and really, the whole building, and kind of where do things look like they're going to be. I think we're going to have more discussion about that, because it's really important as a economic driver for Oregon City, and it's important that we're working very closely with the city of Oregon City. Also, both Ben and I are really putting a tremendous amount of time on the supportive housing dollars, dealing with Metro. I think we're both extremely busy. And I met with, there's a mayor's group, it's a Beaverton Mayor Beatty, and also Joe Buck, they represent the mayors really regionally, and had a meeting with them yesterday, and really trying to get in alignment with our priorities, and moving this forward. This is kind of a, hopefully, a new shift, and that's why it's really taking so much work to hopefully get this headed in the right direction, and ensure that we're doing all we can to bring these services to Clackamas County. So it's critically important we're at the table. So with that being said, I did it in a minute. So on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, thanks for joining us, and this will conclude our business meeting. Thank you very much.